Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
Good evening, welcome to the council meeting, April sixteen, twenty twenty four. Anyone in the audience would like to have a fine headphone, please raise your hand before we move to you. Not seeing any, let's rise for pledge, please.
Pledge of allegiance.
The life of the United States of America. And you're the Republic, we're the hands, one nation, the government, and it is small, and we're the chief of the world.
All right, Donna, can you do a roll call?
Yes. Councilmember Blush.
Here.
Councilmember Sherman.
Here.
Councilmember Gutierrez.
Here.
Mary Nesko.
Here.
Councilmember Sterns. And Councilmember Gilmore.
Here.
Thank you, Donna.
You're welcome.
Does the council have any more reports to share?
Uh, this morning, I went to the contractors conference at the Mason County Building Department and learned about a lot of the changes coming down in the state. Formative, it's like it was gonna be some changes and if it comes from the state, the county goes up, they'll feel it, so. The EDC has some information about that, if anybody has any questions.
Was it international building code stuff or shape stuff?
Data.
It wasn't. Yeah, anyone else? All right. Has everyone reviewed the items in the consent agenda?
We have a motion.
Move to approve the consent agenda as published.
Second. All right, it's motion second to approve the consent agenda as published, all in favor say aye. Aye. Both, motion carries. Our first item is presentation, finance director might be able to.
Thank you, Mayor and members of council. Tonight is the financial presentation for the month of February. So I'm gonna bring it up on screen so that people in Zoom and audience can see it. Know it was in the council packet. Um, so February is still pretty early in the year for us to make some estimates. But we wanna give council and the public a chance to see where each of the citywide funds is in particular. As we're keeping our eyes on the general fund. So I'm gonna start on page two, um, where we give an overview of the general fund revenues. As you take a look at this, we're making some pretty conservative estimates for where we think will be at year end. Um, I'll share with you that when we look at, for instance, property tax, we're estimating right now that we'll fully realize that line item. We should, we typically do within a percent or so. Sales tax, you'll notice we're estimating it to be down a bit, but I can tell you. Um, so far what we're seeing, and we can see three months now, even though this financial report is for two months. There's nothing that's really indicating anything down, but we're conservative in finance, so we tend to. Say, okay, if this is off a bit as we come into some slower months, we want to. Um, be sure that we're estimating that right, but there's nothing that shows us. Um, in these first three months of the year that anything's off, in fact. February was up about twenty thousand dollars and the March receipts were in right about where they were the prior year, so things are looking pretty good there. Um, the both city and non-city utility taxes, we're estimating just slightly under. The B and O tax, again, we're estimating a bit under. We'll just have better figures as each month comes in and we can kind of see where everything's going. Um, fines and penalties has been. Under the last couple of years and we're again estimating that it will be down about thirty-eight percent. But again, we'll see where that is and that likely is a line we'll probably need to just adjust down. As we prepare the twenty-five budget. But that's where our revenues are overall, our estimates are just calling for less than one percent under budget. So it's nothing that I would say is concerning and as. The fiscal year goes on, we'll likely see some changes in this and I would say. Given everything we see today, it wouldn't be any worse off on the revenue side of things for the general fund, so. That's where we're at on, um, the revenue side for general fund, on the expenditure side. Oh, and at the bottom of the page, um, we break that out into percentages and. Kind of a graphic illustration of where each of the pieces of the general fund revenue come in and you can. See that, you know, sales tax and property tax, um, and some of our charges make up the biggest percent of that. On the page three, on the expenditures by department, again, it's very early in the year when we're making these estimates. But we know certain things, we know what's budgeted and we know where we have some staff vacancies and largely that's where we're estimating some of these savings. On the other hand, you'll see there are some lines that we're already estimating to be, um, slightly over budget or. We call it unfavorable to budget. Um, one of, you know, some of those are animal control, we know that those expenses are trending higher this year. Under some of the lines for, um, facility services, we're trending a bit higher. In some cases, this was largely where we have tighter budgets and, um, for example, um, the legal line. Risk, those were largely due to our liability insurance payment that came in. Well, it's more than doubled as we've shared in a couple of years and so those, um, budget categories don't have a lot of expenditures in them, so when something's over to the degree that it was. On that particular expense, that's why those are estimated to be unfavorable. In a lot of the lines where we're estimating a favorable or that will be under budget, it's due to some staff vacancies. Um, you know, that's particularly true, I think, as you look at, um, some of those bottom categories, police, public works. Um, certainly, um, uh, you can compare this to the FTE chart we'll look at on page seven in just a minute. So that's where the expenses are, again, it's still early in the year, this is two months into the fiscal year, so there's not a whole lot that. Is of concern right now, um, but I wanted to just spend a minute on the general fund. Um, on page, uh, where am I at now, page four. Page four, on page four, yes, okay, page four has the comparison of the general fund year to year of revenues and expenditures as compared to twenty-two and twenty-three. I look at this a lot, I think it shows not only where our revenues are increasing, but also where some of our expenditure lines are increasing. Sometimes that's due to some changes we've made internally by, uh, reconfiguring some departments, but overall, I think that this page. And the next one where we do a month-to-month comparison of February twenty-two, twenty-three is compared with, um, February of twenty twenty-four and then a variance. Um, between last year, and so this is oftentimes where I'm looking at. Um, in particular, some of our bigger revenue categories, the sales tax, and that's as I mentioned, it's. Um, not at all down so far this year, in fact, it's, um, four percent above. Where it was last year in the month of February, and as a reminder, February sales tax receipts are representing what happened in businesses for December. There's that two-month lag before we receive the, um, revenue on it, so December's a big month with the holiday shopping, so that's. Why that month tends to be a lot bigger, it levels off then for the next few. But overall, then, those comparisons and on the expense side also a little bit lower on the page, you can see kind of where some of the variance is between. I am particular February of twenty twenty-four and February of twenty twenty-three or last year. And then on the next page. Oops, if I get on the mouse, that would help, is the sales tax comparison, so this is our, um, how we receive the. Categories from the Department of Revenue as they remit that to us, they tell us the breakdown and so we present to you and the public. How our sales tax is coming in, um, retail continues to be the largest category for us, both in the month of February and then throughout the year. Um, but I think this is kind of important to note, we'll tend to see construction maybe kick up a bit as that season happens and. We have some rather large projects going on, um, in the city itself, and so as some of those things happen, we can kind of track it that way. And then on the next page are fund balances, um, citywide, so including, starting with the general fund, but where we're estimating everything to end. I usually point this out to you that we want that estimated fund balance to obviously be in the positive. Um, there's some drawdown of some of the funds, in particular, some of the funds where we're having some capital projects happening that you're seeing around the city right now. So that's some of the drawdown on those. And then on the, um, bottom of that page is what I mentioned about the FTEs, where we're tracking those. So this is as of end of February where we had vacancies, so that's where some of that matches up to some of the savings in departments you're seeing. Citywide, ten and a half vacancies, that's changed a bit when you look a month and a half later, so right now we fill some of those positions. Um, we'll keep that updated, but I think anecdotally, this is a good. Measure of where we're under in some categories, under in spending is largely related to this, and as we pointed out before. Um, you know, how some of these vacancies are tough to fill. Um, but we fill, there are several filled, if we looked at it today, um, there's some of the ones in the other city funds across the public works departments, they've filled some positions, a parks position was also filled. So that's good progress, again, this is as of February. Um, and then on. At the, towards the end of the report, pages nine through twelve, we take you through an overview of all citywide funds detailing the twenty twenty-four budget. Revenues, money in, expenditures out, and kind of a summary version of each fund and where we're estimating it to be. Everything's looking on target, I think there's a lot of work happening, or as you can see in your consent agenda as we're approving, as you're approving the. Um, accounts payable, the bills we're paying, things are happening in a busy manner around the city, so we're keeping an eye on it. That, those are all the formal comments I have. Happy to answer. Sure, that's some interest we're earning primarily on that fund, so right now our investments. Because of the way interest rates are, short-term investments are paying really well, and so our funds are earning quite a bit of money, so that's what that is. The local government investment pool is, um, doing really well right now.
Back to the income balance, we're not sitting on close to five million dollars, we have a reserve policy of twenty percent in case there is a. Downfall in the economy, so we can pay the bills, keep the lights on.
And it keeps.
Extra money, there are some there that we'll talk about in the future about one-time money, but.
It also enables us to pay bills without doing any short-term borrowing, so that cash is liquid so that we can. You know, pay a contractor that we have working on, you know, say for us to school or well won until we get some of the reimbursement on the grant, so it's all of those things that you mentioned.
And unrelated, uh, your, our three vacancies, the police department, are they in academies or anything, or we just still just?
Those are still three vacancies we have, we'll put them on one of those right now. We'll see.
Any other comments? Right? Right? We have another item from Mike, purchase a vehicle, police vehicle.
Yes, I'm gonna present the finance side, and if you have technical questions, Chief Costad is here to answer those, so we, um. Um, Sergeant Moran went out, we have, uh, this is part of the adopted twenty twenty-four budget, our, um. Budget plan to make sure that we're replacing assets and have a plan for that, as you can tell in the briefing, we're. We'll be retiring one of our older police vehicles and surplusing that. Um, but this comes in under budget, it, the amount you have there is for a fully equipped patrol vehicle. So we're asking you to formally approve this and authorize the city manager to sign the purchase order.
Fine, Donna, anyone else have a public comment?
No, Mr. Mayor.
All right, do you have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to place resolution number one three one seven dash zero two two four on the city council, May seventh, action agenda for further consideration.
Okay.
All right, how much questions?
So, you see that you're sending this one, um. You're gonna sell it basically, right, you're surplusing it, correct?
The old one, yes.
Right, right, uh, I saw a thing, um, on the Thurston County page a couple of weeks ago, like three. Police vehicles were damaged in one incident, will we have backup vehicles if that happens with us?
Yes, we have about three backup vehicles right now, so we do have a little bit of.
I think this is one of our oldest.
This is one of our oldest, it's a two thousand thirteen Dodge Charger, like, uh, seven thousand miles on it or so. Um, Dodge Charger was short-lived, he has, uh, career with law enforcement, it was, uh, one of his grandeks, uh, my out, like, one surgeon for the. For the newest vehicle, whatever they can get, and, um, and Dodge came out with a Dodge Charger, so everyone was quite impressed at the vehicle, unfortunately, just didn't. Perform to the standards that, uh, and the capabilities that we needed, um, the smaller platform and the most. Has very little truck space and, uh. You, it was very difficult to get prisoners inside and out, they had proven that, it was just a smaller space, so luckily we didn't invest too much into the Dodge Chargers, we're now onto the Explorers, which are way better control big, at least it higher than a motor burn. So that's what we're replacing all our vehicles right now.
Right. Questions? We have a motion to second, place resolution number one three one seven dash zero four on the council, May seventh, agenda for the consideration. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both, motion carries.
Thank you.
Congratulations, you have a new car. All right, now it's action again, Public Works Director Jay Harris, I've heard a lot of it already.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, uh, Jay Harris, your Public Works Director, uh, so pump for, uh, our well number four pump, uh, last winter, uh, failed us. It went out, it was about. Eighteen years old, twenty years old, right in there, and, um, anyways, uh, we brought out American Pump and Drilling, they quoted us seventy thousand dollars to replace it. Uh, actual costs came in at about sixty-seven thousand dollars, so, uh, cause they didn't need some, uh, few parts that they included in their quote. Um, it's important that all three wells produce water, especially during summertime demand. Um, our water modeling is set up to where, uh, we have one redundant pump in the system, and so, um. The pump failure during the winter is actually a good time, because we don't have obviously summertime demands in the winter, we don't have to produce as much water. So it chose a good time to fail, um, and American, uh, Pump and Drilling was on it, they did a really good job for us, we're really impressed with them. Um, and, uh, there's been no changes since, uh, the last briefing, briefing, and we ask the council approve, uh, the closeout of this project this evening.
Thank you, Jay. Is anyone else have a public comment, Donna? All right, ever reading a resolution number one three two six dash zero three two four?
Resolution number one three two six dash zero three two four. A resolution of the council of the city of Shelton, Washington, accepting the well for pump replacement project as final and complete.
Thank you, Donna, do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt resolution number one three two six dash zero three two four as presented.
So. Right, how much of questions? Right, we have a motion second to adopt resolution number one three two six dash zero three two four presented, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both, motion carries. All right, Jay, do you have a manager report for us tonight?
Yes, I'm serving in two capacities this evening, um, that, uh, the city managers report, uh, what I'd like to talk about is emergency management for a moment, um. So staff, uh, in our six-year work plan, uh, Public Works has emergency management in there, and, um, that's taking prior documents from, from other members here. Um, that no longer work here and upping, uh, those documents, recreating and moving along. So, um, one of the things we're working on is a comprehensive emergency management plan, which you're required by RCW to have. Um, it was last completed in two thousand and three, so we're looking to update that, we're, we're in working on that, uh. And so we should be coming, uh, bringing this back to council, probably I'm thinking this summer. Um, and then we're also, uh, working on our continuity of operations plan, they call it the COOP plan, that's part of the, uh, comprehensive emergency management plan. We're, uh, uh, doing updates to that also, we'll probably be bringing both of them back to you at the same time. Um, FEMA, uh, incident, uh, command system training, uh, a lot of staff members have gone through the basic training, which is, uh. ICS one hundred, two hundred, seven hundred, eight hundred, and then, um, some more employees have got through ICS three hundred and four hundred. That's the emergency management center, you know, where you're running operations and planning group and. Communications and finances, a group of people there in a, in a true emergency of an ELC, uh, this building is the ELC, uh, per the two thousand and three plan. Um, we're gonna be looking in next year's budget to, uh, look at, uh, the seismicity of this building, uh, how did, how well it performed, um. I'm assuming when they did the upgrades, when this building was remodeled, um, that it was done to a higher standard from the former grocery store, um, that was originally built as. So, uh, anyways, we wanna see, cause this needs to be emergency, uh, immediately occupiable, um, because of the nine-one-one center and our ELC, because that's really important. Um, we're also working on emergency communications, if we can't communicate, it's a problem, right? Um, my former job, the cell tower, the towers went down and the power went out in the city, and, uh, without the cell phones and without emails and internet. We're back to this because of a windstorm and, um, meeting in groups, I'll meet you back here in an hour, you go look at this, that sort of thing. So, um, communications is huge, um, we're lucky here at the city that we have a nineteen nineties radio system. And, um, they're in our, our trucks and, uh, in our public works, uh, uh, larger vehicles, uh, backhoes, that sort of thing. And, um, we have different stations around the city, um, that analog system is aging. And so we're gonna be looking at a plan to probably replace that and to have that backup system if the cell towers and such go out. Um, we're looking at our generators for each facility also, um, we have a generator study ongoing with Century West Engineering. Dude, how old are they, uh, do they have the proper average? We're testing them all the time and changing the fuel and maintaining them, but, uh, some of those are gonna need to be replaced over time, because they are getting a little bit older, especially at a couple of the well sites. Uh, the last, uh, thing we're working on is, uh, our cell phone, uh, coverage, we, we currently have Verizon, uh, good company. Um, we're looking at what happens, what type of emergency management, um, do they have with their system compared to T-Mobile? And it's called AT&amp;T FirstNet, uh, Central Mason's on AT&amp;T FirstNet, it's completely separate system from the commercial system, it's. Government system, the federal government's paying AT&amp;T to build a mirrored type of system, it's a pretty interesting conversation that I'll bring you folks in the near future. Any questions about emergency management?
I was kinda curious, mine would be a question for you, so with everything going digital now, what happens there, I mean. Did the police have a backup like we do in the city or? Do you know that much about? Too technical for me, I'm sorry. It will be ran through networks, internet, stuff like that, I would assume.
That's correct, we're, we're looking at backup internet, uh, service, uh, Starlink is online, uh, people are starting to use that as a backup system. And so we're, we're talking about, uh, perhaps, uh, what's our backup internet to this building, um, we could lose the fiber connection. Um, I've had that happen before and it was down for two days, and it was lucky that we, the fiber went down, but we had Comcast also. So within a few hours, we'd switched everything over, so the servers are running and everyone has internet access and all that, but that's something we're looking at also. Um, to see how robust is the fiber, um, in the incident I went through, that a truck, uh, dump truck had clipped the wire when his, uh, bucket was up. A lot of the poles have fiber on them and you clip it in one spot, well, it's difficult to find where the break is. Technology's better now that they can map it out better in their system and, and find where the problem is. So the second part of the manager's report is, uh, uh, the automated, uh, meter infrastructure project, um, is moving along. Um, that all parts have been delivered, um, that's the meters, the boxes and the transmitters. Uh, currently we're running, I guess you'd call it an analog meter system with the dial and it's all mechanical, that's all brass. Um, and they're aging, uh, so we have all the parts on hand, um, we have the specifications about ninety percent done. We hope to have them done this week, maybe later next week, be out to bid. So, um, once we receive the bids, I'll be speaking to you folks of the results, probably in about six weeks, I'll be back to talk to you about those.
When will the public be able to actually use an app to watch their, their usage and all that stuff?
Yeah, so with this current phase of the project, we won't have that capability, we're, uh, going to what's called drive-by or walk-by radio read. So we'll be able to get readings at, at any time near automatic. The antenna fixed base, antenna fixed base read system is proposed to be put in about this time next year, that's the next phase of the project. We wanna get the phase of the wa, right now. We read every meter manually, you gotta lift up the rid, lid, read the dial, if you get the numbers down right, we do a lot of re-reads, that sort of thing. With the au- automated walk-by read or drive-by read, we'll be able to pick up the readings as you go down the road, it'll take about a day. Right now, it's taking two to three people, about two weeks to do all the meters, this will shave it down to a day, day and a half sort of thing. Um, we want that system in place and used to it, then we're gonna go next to, and the antenna, so if the antenna fails, we can go back to walk-by. If walk-by fails, you can open up every box and look in there, we're going with sealed boxes now, though, they're pretty solid-state items. And so hopefully we won't have to go read a whole bunch of them, usually if you have a failure, it's a battery or transmitter, something you go fix, you know, that, that local thing. So, uh, fixed base about a year from now, at that point, we're gonna be installing new software at the city and, um, that the utility building staff. When someone wants to close out account, um, we can get you your final read, takes a couple minutes to send out the request. It goes around through the system, pings that meter, it sends you back the result. The meters store, um, oh, well, you can set it at different settings, but typically it's every two hours it sends you a signal of the usage at that, uh, particular home. And, uh, what's very advantageous is that night that is doing these readings and is comparing it night after night after night. And it will know when your toilet's running or if you have a waterline break, and it will notify city staff, and we're gonna be knocking on doors or emailing people about. Potential, uh, water loss that they don't realize, so that part of the system would be really nice. The, uh, property owner can also look at their bill and figure out when are, when by using the most water, and, uh, it could be your kids, like I had a daughter that loved to take half-hour showers, right? And, uh, it would use a lot of water, you'll be able to figure things out like that over a year from now, once you log on to your account.
Any more from you, any report?
No, no other, uh, updates.
Thank you, Jay. At this time, members of the public are invited to make public comment on any city-related topic that's not listed on the agenda, Donna, outside of public comments.
Dean Jewett, lifelong Mason County member, appreciate being here, uh, I wanna give you the state of Shelton address. Uh, we have two camps that have been cleaned up in the last week or so, two pretty big major ones by Nealon Park. Uh, thing of it is, is one of those camps has been there for years and years and years, did I say years? So where's the due diligence on the city's part, where's the dereliction of duty? Eric, maybe you can answer that for us, maybe I'll get an email from you. Uh, we had a lady sitting in, uh, one of the, one of the benches down by the clock tower, just dropped her pants, took a piss. Don't, don't, no big deal, that's the new norm, it's okay, right? We're okay with that. Uh, we have a, a. We have a, uh, a bike trailer, everybody knows what a bike trailer is, guy carries it around behind his bike, pulls it around. Uh, showed up over at a Peninsula Community Credit Union, just hanging out there. Uh, I would like, or I would like somebody here in the council to make a motion that our. Uh, code enforcement officer maybe does a little bit of proactiveness. That is against the ordinances that you guys, that hold up to on the books. So maybe we send Jim Morel. A message that says, hey, this isn't acceptable. Why don't we stop this, why don't we get a no trespassing order on file so that we can remove that? He had it chained up to the concrete girder. We're seeing an increase of RVs, we have one that comes in and out of McDonald's area, comes there, stays two or three days and splits, comes back two or three days, another one's there. So what are we doing with that? Uh, I would like somebody on the council to throw a motion out there for a town hall meeting. Something I've been talking about, last one we had was kind of a joke that Jeff Knighton called. Yeah, I think right now that we need a town hall meeting every two months. Until we get things under control, you know, it'd be nice to do also, we had a, uh, a kind of joke, uh, joke of a, uh. Uh, a homeless task force, I think that we should actually have one that's ongoing the whole time, that has some community members. Business people and maybe even some of the kids from the high school, might not be a bad idea. Second thing I wanna hit on is my three button hot, my hot button topic, and I wrote it down so I wouldn't forget it. I enforce the street camping ordinance that's already on the books, that's why it's called an ordinance, let's read it and let's, let's enforce it, we've yet to enforce it. Uh, let's pass and enforce the no lay lie ordinance. Uh, let's pass and enforce a shopping cart ordinance, these aren't new ordinances to Washington State, they've already been tried, they've already been. Uh, challenged and they've already been held up, so let's get it done. Let's, uh. Let's see, uh, the city issued an occupancy permit and a conditional use permit to community lifeline. Who's holding them accountable? Do you guys know? Thank you.
Thank you, Donna, anyone else signed it?
We have someone on this, we have Colleen Carmichael. Good evening, Marinesco and fellow council members, my name is Colleen Carmichael and I'm the Executive Director of Quixote Communities. According to the National Coalition to End Homelessness, there are seven evidence based practices for reducing homelessness. They are commonly accepted in making decisions about this population. And can only be considered evidence based if research has been proven significant positive outcomes in two or more controlled studies. Assertive community treatment is a team based model designed to provide all inclusive, community based psychiatric treatment. Rehabilitation and support to persons with serious mental illnesses. Research has shown that this can support individuals with the most severe mental illnesses and reduce hospital stays as well as length of imprisonment. Critical time intervention is a time limited case management focused on supporting people with serious mental illnesses. That are being exited from facilities, research has proven that CTI programs are cost effective. And clients that receive services were more likely to stay housed. Housing first provides housing to individuals and families that have serious mental illnesses along with substance use disorders. It supports clients' needs and encourages them to create and implement their own goals. With no preconditions for housing except complying with standard lease agreements. Research shows it increases housing stability, cost effective. And increases utilization of other supportive services. Motivational interviewing supports clients by exploring and resolving their lack of effort towards illegal and harmful lifestyles. Research has proven that these techniques have reduced many problem behaviors, including behaviors related to drug use. Permanent supportive housing provides affordable housing with services by providing wraparound case management and property management. Research has shown PSH clients have an increase in housing stability. Trauma informed care engages people with trauma histories in a way that recognizes their trauma. And acknowledges the role trauma has played in their lives. Harm reduction aims to reduce the negative effects of drug and alcohol use, it is the term that describes activities applied to programs and policies. With the aim to lessen the health, social and economic effects of substance use. It also creates an awareness of the resources that can help minimize the harm from substance use. We hope the city council will use these evidence based practices in your strategies to reduce homelessness in Shelton. And this is brought to you by the homeless task force, which I have represented for the, every time that I come every two weeks. So you know it is active and we are working on plans, thank you.
Mister Mayor, we have one more.
Thank you, Tamara Ingwaldson, and I'm representing Quixote Communities this evening and I also live in Lake Limerick. I wanted to invite you to the birthday celebration that the Mason Conservation District is spearheading. And that will be this Saturday from, I mean, from ten AM to two PM. Up at our Shelton Veterans Village, it'll be a really fun time to get together and plant pollinators and fruit trees. And as the community garden grows, then it'll be an opportunity for. Not only the residents to be able to learn about microgreens and have access to healthier food and learn how to care for a garden and. Have that therapeutic benefit as well, but also it'll become a teaching garden for the broader community, so it's another way of building community together. And a variety of ways to help everybody thrive together in Shelton and Mason County, thank you.
Thank you. All right. I'd like to bring up, uh, we received a, it's gonna be public record, so. Um, we received a letter from the United States Post Office, I don't know if everybody knows, for the last. Fifty years, we've had an agreement with the post office to use post office park. Uh, as a park in our tree lighting ceremonies and stuff, we've been doing there for, for many years since I was a kid, not an old guy now. So, a few years ago, we got word, post office was going to tear that tree down and make that a parking lot, so we thought, oh my gosh, who's gonna do that? And the word got out and people were, ended up said, oh my gosh, don't take our park, and so we started negotiating a deal to swap post office park for Brewer Park. Um, that was going pretty well, on and off the last couple of years, we thought we were coming to an end and we got a letter from the post office saying, sorry. We're not gonna do it, we're gonna keep our park, we're going to make it a parking lot, we're gonna cut your tree down July first. So if anybody has strong feelings about it, call your post office and if you want the number for DC, I would be glad to give that to, to the gentleman who sent the letter. That has been a, a, a place for us to gather for. I mean, I'm fifty six years old and I think I'm seventy seven, since I've been here, forty five years, forty six years and. And many other people, and that tree was also donated by some Senator Owen or something like that, yeah, I forgot, but, um. It's, it's a shame, there's no reason why they couldn't, uh, do that park swap and put their parking lot across the street. But it's gonna be a nice wrought iron fence, we paid for it, we actually supplied the post office with thirty some thousand dollars that we're hoping to get that back. Uh, we paid survey after survey, we paid for, um, SEPA, I think, uh, reports, we. You know, we paid for the wrought iron fence, we were gonna put around that park and they basically just said at the almost very end, we thought it was gonna happen. Said, oh, sorry, we're not gonna do it tonight, and, um, that letter, I mean, it's public record, I would be glad to share, if anybody would like to see the letter from your post office, but, uh. Like I said, if you got any strong reservations about that part and you wanna talk to somebody, start making phone calls, because you've got till July.
Well, that tree is the second tree that's been there. The first tree was there when I was a little girl and it got huge, they cut that down. Planted that tree, so that's second generation tree. So if anything, we do need to get on this and save that second generation tree.
All I have to say. I do wanna say the post office offered for us to relocate that tree. That tree's like a hundred feet tall and the root probably go down the French tree. That's my spiel, anybody else have anything, new items? All right, uh, our next meeting is. Is, uh, May seventh at six PM, we also have today's session at point three to six PM, this meeting is adjourned at six thirty nine PM.